Counselor Goodwin. Mayor Gorley.
Here.
Counselor Hobbs.
Here.
Counselor Mahler.
Excused.
Counselor Traf.
Here.
Counselor Underwood.
I'm not sure about them all. Counselor Goodwin is on his way. I know I signed in the parking lot. Signed in the parking lot, coming this way. A, B, C, and D. Those in favor, say goodbye by saying a "Hi."
Hi.
Those opposed. Motion passes to approve minutes A, B, C. Robert.
I'd like to make a statement on... Last time we had official counsel leave, couldn't really address some of the issues that came up, but there was a letter put in by Harry L. Burke. He's here today. And I'd just like to address some of those questions in that letter. It helps explanatory with the answers that I give if you haven't seen the letter. The City Council and Craig Martin have entered into an agreement and review. That agreement states the position of the City Council and Craig Martin on the separation of employment. The topic of direction of the city is a good one. It can be discussed by using ideas of the public and ideas of the council, but comparisons will not be made by the council between what Craig Martin would or would not do. The Council and Craig Martin entered into the agreement, and both, I am sure, will try to their best to honor it. There were some other questions listed, and I'll just as well get to those. There was a job description of the city manager. What was happening with that? We've contacted the lead, got materials from them. There is a pamphlet out. It was in one of the council meetings, if you haven't seen it. There's also materials out from other cities who have recently hired city managers who have been contacted. We also intend to draw from the city manager pro temp. The candidates have all said that they could help in that selection process. The next question that was entertained was, who's going to conduct the interviews for city manager? From the materials that I've read, it's a combination of citizens, employees, and the council to do that, whether it's separate panels or a combination of panels or whatever. Input from all three sections are, I think, advisable. And the final decision, of course, is with the City Council, and that's by charter. Another question was on pro temp city manager. We've been taking resumes. We've gotten references on the candidates, and we intend on having a meeting on that on May 17th. Special council meeting, we'll address later at this meeting, to conduct some interviews with some candidates. And then, the last question addressed union negotiations. Concern there. We have a city negotiator, the finance director, and the public works director, who have done it numerous times before, and with the council have... are the team for the negotiation. And we just all got out of the meeting about an hour or so with the negotiator on updates on that. And so, that's basically my answers to the letter and the discussion that we couldn't do on the special council meeting because it wasn't on the agenda, and we have to stick with the agenda. Tried very hard to stick with that for a special council meeting.
Okay. So at this time, I would do recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. If you have anything that you'd like to say to the council, come forward. And I had Julie bring a microphone, and she'll go ahead. If you want to, she'll just bring it to where you're sitting. So if you raise your hand, press it around. Make sure you state your name and your address, please, for the record, so Julie will know who's saying what. Each time you speak, yes.
Every time I come in, I do hear you. Thank you for your attention. Did you guys hear me? Yeah? Thanks for the attention and the opportunity to speak at this meeting this week. The question I'd like to bring before the council is, I understand people's concerns about Craig Martin being... His contract being terminated in the current contract that the city has with him in its termination. The question I had, and what concerned me, was that the last meeting we were at, the council was acting as if they hadn't planned for Craig to be terminated. When the question came up as to who would cover him and his responsibilities, I even heard someone say, "Well, can't the staff just do that?" Why that concerns me is that how do you have the judgment and the wisdom to terminate a person from a position because you don't think they're heading in the same direction that the city is if you're not even aware of what job they do and who could cover or not cover for them? So that raised my concerns a bit. So what I'd like to bring to your attention really is about, do you have processes for when you make decisions? Do you have processes for when you make decisions like that, such as before you decide to terminate a person or a role? That you understand what that current... How that current role is being filled? Who's available to cover it in the short term? And then, what if you... If he didn't fit the mold of where the city was heading? Where is that? What is that direction? Because how can you hire someone else without knowing what that direction is? So that was my basic concern. Hopefully you heard.
So I think there's a couple different questions. Three different questions that I had there. Number one is, in the short term, we're looking at... We have an interim clerk that's been appointed. We'll do that tonight. Some of the charter says that you have to wait so many days to do certain things, and so after that happens, the charter says you have to wait so long before you do a certain amount of stuff. So you can't do some of those things ahead of time. But we're looking tonight at appointing a interim city clerk that does meetings and takes care of the... As a pro temp, if you will, city manager until we get to... Until we get a pro temp in place. And then, as far as direction, I think that's something that the rest of the council is going to have to look... Or they're going to have to come together on a... What they want to see in a new city manager. Different or change from what we... The direction we were going. And the third question...
The second question is basically sticking to what I've said is the direction of the city. The council can put in their input, and the public is hearing in their input.
And that's exactly where we need to go.
I guess my concern is, and I think people can hear me. I guess my concern is, how do I know that the council is not going to learn something from this? Because I've seen it happen twice now, where things have been decided without some forethought, or at least the perception. Maybe there was forethought. Maybe it had been planned for a long time. But the perception of lack of forethought of how do we manage without a city manager before we make that decision to get rid of one? So is there a change that you guys see as far as the way you're going to handle these things in the future? The way you're going to communicate with the community about those kind of decisions? Process changes or something that you see? Or do you think everything went well, and it's just the way it is?
Well, I think... There's no question we need better processes. I mean, this council is not as organized as I would like to see it. Things are not done as well as I would like to see them done. I think everybody up here would like processes to be better and to be clearer and more transparent. Sometimes it's legal constraints that cause that. So a lot of the... What the city and the public didn't see happened in the executive session. The news had the luxury of being there because they're entitled to be there, but not a lot of report on it. There reaches a point where you sometimes have to trust the city council. I mean, each person up here has been selected, has been elected, is known by people in the city, and they've been chosen for different reasons. You know, but ultimately because you trust them. And there are... You know, I'm not going to talk about the past at all. As Mr. Snyder pointed out, there are legal considerations that just prevent us from going down that road. We're not going to talk about why we did what we did. But do you trust the men that sit at this table? That's what you have to decide. That we're trying to do what we think is what's best for the city. We want what's best for the city. We want the future to be bright. You know, I have a five-point plan for the future of the city that I've shared with the council before. I want the city to be prosperous, beautiful, clean, safe, and healthy. And I'd be glad to... You know, if you want to talk sometime individually about what each of those things mean to me, you know, whether it's job growth, whether it's better sewer treatment, whether it's, you know, just cleaner appearance, better parks. All of those things are things I'm working towards. So I do have a vision. We do have goals for the future of the city, but I can't talk about the past. I mean, except we can't go down that road. So that's the tricky part.
I don't think we care to talk about the past. I think what we care about is that we don't repeat the past in the future. And trust is earned. Because you're elected doesn't mean you don't instantly get our trust. You're a leadership board. Leadership is not just mandating directives to the people you're leading. It's positively influencing them to get to where you want them to be. So what I'd like to suggest... I've been a manager. I've managed from five to 20 people. I've managed $20 million to $50 million budgets. What I would suggest is maybe the council spends some time working on that transparent influencing part of it. Because then we wouldn't have to continue to repeat and keep asking, "What the hell is going on?" If it's trust, you need to start building that trust, and that's...
I think one of the things that we just got done with doing two months ago was we had a goal-setting session. And we sat... We spent two days trying to come up with a group, a large group of people from the city and from leaders to come up with some goals. And I think there's another step beyond that. Is once we get those goals, is that... And we haven't been able to do this yet, but I think we need to sit down with the people in the city and explain to them what those goals are and why those goals came about, and where the direction that those goals will take in the future. And I think that that's something we can do, but I think we have to justify why those goals were in existence and where they came from. I'm not so sure that it wouldn't be a good idea to get John back here too for a short period of time to do a, you know, a community goal session with what... Where our goals are and then how it was fit into the community. We have goals for how the city runs and for things that need to happen, but then how it was integrated with what the city's goals are, so...
Before we move on, I want to just respond. I want to be clear, because I sense a lot of frustration. You know, feeling like frustrated, like you don't feel like you're involved in the process. I got to tell you, sitting on the other side of the table, it can be frustrating at times because it feels like people aren't interested or aren't involved unless something sparks their attention. And believe me, everybody here at this table wants the city to be involved. We constantly are talking to voters. We're constantly talking to people out there about what's important to them. You know, what do you want from your parks? What do you want from things? I mean, if I were a mayor contest, I mean, it's very interesting to hear from all the kids what they want for their city. So, you know, the door is open, and, you know, we listen when you do this, but we also listen at our regular council meetings, and most of the time it's just us. Nobody counts. And there are important things we're talking about at those meetings that we want you to be involved in. So be involved at all times, not just when it's, you know, something that's really... Be involved when it's important, you know, when it's critical, but also be involved all the time. Sign up. We've got some committees with open spots. I believe we have several committees.
We still have an opening on the budget committee.
Yeah, the budget committee has, I think, two. I think there's two open spots on the budget committee, last I checked. I mean, join the budget committee. Be involved in how we spend the money. We want you involved. I mean, we want the whole city involved in these decisions, so...
Mr. Mayor, I got... Before he goes and starts, I want you to know that I personally... And I don't know if I'm speaking for the rest of the council. I personally do not take this lightly. And to answer one of your questions is, is that there's no good time. There's never a good time. And if we would have done this two years ago, that we'd have been all through the same process. We're bound to do the way the charter says to do and the way we can legally do. And don't think we took this lightly. It isn't like we took it lightly. And I'm not going to talk about the past either. I want to move forward, okay? This is the decision we made, and it is what it is. And that's... I'm just trying to tell you that we didn't do this lightly. It wasn't like it happened overnight.
Julie?
My name's Gary Jarvis. Post-op's about 2:84, so we don't... I'd like to expand just a little bit more on what you spoke about debt in as far as the frustration, lack of transparency. I was the president of a local union for almost 17 years. And we had to deal with some tough things over time, including removing stewards, removing appointed officers, and things like that. When we made such decisions, we always at least generally gave the membership an idea of why we felt it necessary to do that. We also, if it was something that we voted on as an executive board, our executive board made clear who voted for, who didn't vote for. And as far as the initial decision as to who was in favor of making this decision, we, the members, essentially of this community, have not an idea because what was reported was it was a small majority of the council that was in favor of even proffering this forced retirement. And so, I think that it is... That's an area of transparency that I think the community could benefit from. And at least a general, more than just the vague change of direction. Because legal reasons or otherwise that might be in the agreement and like that, that doesn't have to be disclosed, but something more concrete than simply a different direction would ease a lot of that frustration. And then, when you get... When we talk about the timing. I think at this point right now, the timing could not have been worse. We have negotiations going on right now. We also have the police that are going to be attempting to negotiate a new contract here shortly. And we know that Sweet Home is one of the lowest wage level for a city of this size or their police department, you know, in the state of Oregon. And Sweet Home has jokingly been known as the Oregon Academy of Police Training at Sweet Home. Because we... How much money do we spend training officers just to have them lead within a year or whatever their prerequisite requirement is to stay and go find better pay elsewhere? And so, I think that the consistency of having the same city manager that we've been... That they've been dealing with. I think that this... Even if this was necessary. I mean, by your estimation, it was necessary. And we have, based on the information that we have, we have little choice but to accept it, even if we disagree. But I think the timing of it could have been far better by waiting until after these things that are on the city's agenda for this year were taken care of and go through their processes first. And so, you know, I mean, I could go on about this all day long, but those are the two main comments that I think are germane at this meeting right now. It's hard to ask questions when you don't know what question... The appropriate question to ask is.
I do thank you for your comment. That's Robert. Where should be left any comments?
Legitimate comments.
The legal stuff again. But the one thing I'm going to ask is, I talked about having a community-wide goal thing with talking about our goals. How many people would come to that? Okay. All right. So we'll set something up. And is Saturday morning okay with people?
Does your track meet Saturday?
Not this Saturday. It's going to be a month or so before we're able to get that... The person that did our goals. Or would it be better during the week on... We're getting into time for going into graduation, all that sort of stuff. So that's going to be tough, but...
Well, if I do since work, I like evenings.
Evening's okay with people?
Earlier.
We could probably do six. Six o'clock.
You can get off of work as well.
Yeah. I have up front first.
Okay. I'm sorry if I'm repeating something that somebody else has previously said because I'm hearing it here, so I'm not hearing it. And my handy, handy little record their voice thing is like giving you some weird information. So I was just wanting to ask...
Name and address, please. Name and address.
My name and address? Okay. Can you pick it up without that? My name is Jan Hufferd, and I live in 4106 Highway 20, Sweet Home. Okay. Clarify for me. Any city manager, regardless of who they are, serves at the will of the council. Is that for not correct?
Yes.
There's nothing in there that says they have to get approval from the city first before they make a decision?
Mr. Swanson?
I'm Tim Johnson. Live at 4500 10th Avenue. And I'm not satisfied with the past in the past. I'm a citizen here, and this surprise of, oh, we're going to force out the city manager and have him retire early for any reason that we can't discuss, it doesn't fly with me. I'm a citizen. I want more than that. Now, I feel like you're hiding. Am I being honest? I feel like you're hiding. I feel like there's some kind of coalition. They got together and thought, "Here's what we want." I don't like what it sounds. I don't like it. I believe you need to change. I believe you need up front and honest and transparent. I do not believe that you need to hide behind, "Well, we have a severance package." You may need to do that now legally, but that is a real challenge, in my opinion. You need to stand up like men and explain yourselves and be honest and let the truth forward falls. That's what you need to do.
How many dollars, though, are you willing to spend defending that lawsuit and paying the damages when the city's...
I understand what you're saying.
Because that's your line.
Listen to me. I'm not talking about lawsuits here. I'm talking about standing up and saying, "Hey, this is what I believe. This is what I'm doing. This is what I'm going to do. This is why we're doing it," and not hiding. Not hiding behind executive sessions and closed sessions. Stand up like men. Do it. Now, oh, now we have to hide behind legal severance packages. You didn't have to do that two weeks ago. Stand up. I'm calling you. I'm calling you. Stand up. I voted for you. Stand up like men.
No, sir. I'm not sure you understand. That's been the case the entire time. That hasn't been a result of a contract we signed. That's been the case the entire time. And you should have heard us standing up and fighting with the others and arguing with the others.
That's okay. I understand. I understand. I understand, but we've got an agreement. It's labor law, and that's where we stand right now. We have an agreement, and that's what we're going to stick with.
Jeanne West?
I'm Jeanne West, 728 Burke Street. I'm just a citizen. I've been never run a corporation. Just raised a family. But I don't know if I'm actually hearing you right. Okay. Quinian wasn't ready to go forward with your direction. However, you said... You haven't even said any goals yet, so how do you know he's going to go forward with them now? I mean, you don't want to talk about the past, and that's where our questions were at. Hey, what happened? We want to know why this happened. But you can't talk about it because it's illegal. Why did we have this meeting? That's why we came. So we could find out what was going on and what went on. I don't think that's asking too much.
I think this discussion probably should have happened at the first meeting we had last week, and it helped people.
Should have, would have, could have.
I wasn't here, I'm sorry. I was in Texas.
Should have, would have, could have. This is now.
You're out of line.
Will?
You're out of line.
Yes, sir.
That's it. That's all I wanted to know.
And I agree. I'm sorry. Sorry. Just a second there. Robert, you have another?
I... I've already... It was a special meeting, and there was only... By law, there's only certain things on there. That's why we're having it here. It's not anybody's.
So I have one here, one in the back, and one in the front.
Are you quiet?
Yes. No, 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 no. You're right here. In the middle. Right in front of you.
Mary Lloyd, 1828 Burke Street. And thank you for letting me speak. And you're right, people should attend all the time. It was early, I really would. I did come to the one. I'm a little concerned after Mary Beth resigned. So I did come to that one after, and I was hoping there would be more people in support because I don't know if anybody was held accountable about what I read in the paper, and I think it was wrong. And then also, then several other things have happened, and nobody's getting their correct answers. I wondered... I know we've had the Samaritan thing with Wiley Creek. And then there was a closed meeting, and that's what my question is, between you, co-committee, a counselor, and Samaritan CEOs. And I want to know, why is that closed? The public's not supposed to know about it?
There was no closed meeting. That's open. That's an open meeting.
Well, it says in this article... Well, I have that. They wanted it closed, that they didn't want any of the public to know anything about it.
Samaritan asked during that meeting. They said, "Is this on the record?" And I said, "Yes, this is an open meeting." Anything said here, anybody in the community can be at these meetings. We want to have them here because this affects them. This is an open meeting.
So anything that you have about the development of the town, that building the teleport and all the plans that you guys have is open there.
Any of those discussions have to be open meetings. That's why we made it.
Was that what you're talking about? That the... That Mr. Martin wasn't in? He didn't agree with the plan? I don't understand it either.
Okay. We can't comment on that legally. That's the discussion.
Obviously, they're meeting the...
But any of our meetings, the reason we... The reason we made that committee, a city council committee, was so it would be under the open meetings law. Because it could have been done as a... Some other community group in the city having meetings with them, and it didn't fall under the public meetings law. And we said, "No, we want to have it where everybody can come and listen." So...
Yes. On a... Probably two cents on the particular Samaritan issue because they are a correct organization. I'm sorry. On Samaritan in particular, we can't compel them to have public meetings with us. We want them to. But anytime they can say, you know, "That's fine. We're private. This is our money. We're going to do it how we want to do it." But we are attempting to get them to engage in a more public way. And currently, they're open to it because they saw how poorly it went. But I can't always compel them to do it. But if the counselors are involved in those meetings, then they'll be open. Does that make sense? I don't know if that's the answer.
Far back?
Lois Garvis, Post-op, brought us to a more Sweet Home argument. And maybe this question is directed at... Um, Lois Garvis wants to talk about to a more Sweet Home Oregon, and maybe this question is directed at your city attorney, maybe helpful? I am confused, uh, whether or not you as individuals are legally constrained from answering which ones of you voted for, yea or nay, my price dismissal, or whether this is something that you have just decided amongst yourselves not to reveal? Because as, you know, a voting member of your party, when people decide, if they decide after all of this, they want to run against the office, you know, I kinda want to have some level of guidance as to whether I wish to vote for you or not. And so the issue for me is, is this something legally, because it happened in executive private session, that you're obligated not to reveal legally, or is this something that you have just decided amongst yourselves that you shall not reveal? And that's the legal question that I kind of would like answered, I'm, I've never been totally clear about that.
Okay, the, the answer is this, the vote was not taken in executive session. You did not take votes in executive session. You can have a consensus in executive session, you can discuss in executive session, but you do not make a final decision in executive session. You come out of executive session and make it in an open forum, which this was done, which the vote is on the record for, uh, who voted for what, basically what came out was in fact the, uh, the agreement in release, and that's what was voted on.
So that is the only agreement? Okay, that's where my confusion was, thank you.
Correct.
Okay, I, I.
I, I understand what you're saying and coming from, but that's how it was done and, and it was done.
Thank you, thank you.
Technically, yeah.
Uh, Frederick?
Vince Adams, eight oh nine Mountain View Road. Uh, two items, the Craig Martin thing, I've dealt with some things through union and company issues, so I can understand where these guys are coming from, uh, with not disclosing or not being able to talk about certain issues where Craig Martin was, uh, concerned. They're not allowed to. I've dealt with the Labor Relations Board up in Portland several times, and you can be put under a gag order for a certain period of time, it could be forever, it could be for six months or a year, it depends on what's going on. Whether they dealt with Labor Board or whether it was internal, doesn't matter, at some point in what they, what they did and what they decided, there's a legal issue that says they can't discuss certain things. And I think that's what people are having a problem understanding. They would probably discuss them if they could, but they're not allowed to, and so I don't wanna beat a dead horse any further than that. My second item is, the reason I'm here, the other reason I'm here tonight, is I have, uh, for, uh, commercial vehicles up in residential areas, I have a problem with that, and we have some ordinances that sorta cover that. I've discussed with Joe, the city engineer, and the lady, I can't remember her name, uh, they got a meeting coming up, but I just wanted to get on record here at the city council, that I'm moving in that direction to try and research that a little bit more with the safety, uh, traffic safety people, and, uh, at their next meeting, when it comes up, so that I can get resolution to the big king wheelers and the log trucks that are parking on residential streets, not in front of their own house, but in front of my house. And so I want that to stop, and so I'm working with them to try and get that alleviated.
Well, this is the traffic safety chair right here, so he's taking notes.
Right, okay.
This, this has been an ongoing problem, anybody who's lived in Sweet Home for a lot of years, I know. Over the past twenty-four years, maybe on the council, I know we've talked about it a lot. And, um, even First Avenue, uh, people driving up First Avenue, the, especially the log trucks and the, the bigger trucks that had cut off through there, uh, it's been a big topic of discussion, so.
Thank you for listening, I wanna say something.
Okay, we have a.
Okay, can everybody hear me? See me? Okay, let's do this. Okay, that better. Um, one thing, cause you guys probably know I'm pretty new to the council now, one thing I've noticed that might help with you guys do is, executive sessions, what I've found is in executive sessions is where council talks, and we are not allowed to share that, and that's for respect for whoever's in the room that we're, that we're dealing with with what we're doing. And that's a protection thing, I guess you could say. Um, what we do in open council, you, you guys are more welcome to come and listen and ask questions and things like that. And I'm not saying I disagree with some of the questions that are out there, I mean, I really do, and I, I feel for you cause there, this is a, a personal thing, for a small community, everybody's definitely kind of personal, I do understand that. And also, why are we here tonight if we're not going to try to answer some sort of question?
Exactly.
I'm sorry, I may be out of line or out of order, whatever, but I think there are some questions that we can come close to giving an idea or a feeling or something.
That's our city attorney is, is our guy.
I've already asked and answered on that, it's labor law, we're not discussing employee, and employee doesn't discuss us. Um, and that's where it sits. We can't even give an, an idea to look up of our vision. Well, we didn't say that, my first words, my first words were that, from, uh, Mr. Burke's letter, he talked about that, and I said that the public is gonna have some good ideas, and the council is gonna have some good ideas, and the mayor has taken that, and we're gonna have a meeting on it with the goal setter. Presumably, most people are gonna show up, and we're gonna go from there on that issue. And that's totally, totally accepted.
Uh, one of the questions has been quite plainly.
You need to speak up.
Oh, sorry. Uh, one of, you said, that's right. Um, one of the questions that was plainly asked of us was, uh, our position on, uh, what they're to retain or release Craig, if we discuss that.
I understand, I understand, I'll answer the question, no, we had an open vote, an open council on the issue that was before council, the vote was there.
That is not the same.
I understand that, but the other, the answer is no.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, um, I have one in the middle here.
Hi, I'm Jim Morris, ten eighty-four, uh, thirty-seven. Has there, has this city ever had a plan? I mean, you know, my question is, is, has there been a vision that this city really wants to go forward and seek? You know, uh, bear with me, I've owned a meter three years. Been driving down town, you know, looking around, and I'm going, I've seen a bunch of shops, I'm, yeah, okay, this area was great for thrift stores. Okay, we got a lot of thrift stores, you know, we got two, two markets. What are we doing to bring business in here? What are we doing to get our kids off of drugs, bring some freaking businesses in here, get them off the streets? And we give them something, you give them some hope, you get them off. You know, the, the problem here is, I'm seeing a bunch of buildings, I already have to coach.
Okay, we, over the course of the last ten years, we've had, uh, our community planning, uh, do, uh, long-term goals. For, and we had, the entire community has been involved in that.
Well, that's what I noticed, I mean, as far as the whole community, that's what the city is running on, volunteer.
And, uh, well, no, they've been involved in creating this plan, and we've done it three times, twice since I've been here. Uh, and it's been re-evolved and re-remastered, and, uh, during that time, um, uh, who? Robert, have you, were you involved in that, uh, the master plan and the, and some of those things during the time you were here?
You asked me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
When, do you remember, um, when we first did that, was that in like ninety?
It's been at least twenty years.
Yeah, and we, and we re-upped that, we've redone it every, is it every ten years? Uh, it should be in the goals in our, in our budget document.
If, if everything's been re-upped, what has been accomplished, I mean?
What is the master plan?
What is the plan for the city?
What's that?
What is the master plan? That's all.
That's not that, nobody's getting the answer, they're.
All right, it, we, we do the, we do a master plan and, or we have that where the community can come in and talk about what that is. Their goals at that point, when we do that, we have three people show up to that meeting. Okay? Three people, or four. Uh, Mr. Goodler, you have that?
The goal's right here, I'd be glad to pass it around, people wanna take a look at it. I gotta be honest, I don't put a lot of faith in it, but that's what we're working on, that's part of why we have adopted it.
It's a way to be drafted up later on and be.
I'll take it real quick, you'll get it by the time you want, they're, they're online. It's all there in my budget, please, please get it back to me, cause I'm working, we're in the middle of the budget, and I'm working really hard on it, that's why I got it.
You know, listen, I'm on thirty-eighth Street, cause by the house, you know, it ended up being a boat. You know, I'm, my drainage ditches go nowhere, you know, I'm paying the city for drainage water that sits in front of my house. You know, I guess somebody comes up with a stick in the water and said, yep, you're right, it ain't moving, okay? And I'm sitting there going, look, and then I gotta say, okay, we got a block of ten year building coming up, we need to buy a new building. And I go, yep, so you, you mentioned, you go, hey, you gotta, you gotta hold the roof, well, I gotta fix that, I'm a homeowner, I gotta patch my own.
Okay, you, you, uh, you wanna look at our building, go down and talk to them?
No, no, I've seen, I've been to the building, I've been to the building, but I mean, you, the thing is, we can't take care of borough.
Go down and look at the jail cells downstairs, see where it's been flooded three or four times. Um, you'll, you'll understand, but the, the, some of these goals that we have in here are, are goals that the council has set. We also have a, uh, we have a master plan, we have a parking master plan, we have a, um, Mike, what other ones do we have?
Park.
Parks master plan.
Waste water.
Waste water master plan, we have all these different master plans that, that we've had community input into.
But have some of the waste water, has it, has, uh, been backfired or anything?
No. No? That's what. Well, so when we have discussion on these master plans and you have three people show up to a meeting, uh, to talk about it, um, and I'm there to talk about it, but I'm looking at it from the city's point of view. We need to have people, if they wanna talk about things from the city point of view, we need to have them there. And so when, uh, when people talk about what is the plan, the plan is your plan. And it's whoever shows up at the time that helps create that plan.
Understand that we don't always agree, and that's probably a very big, you know, I mean, we, we disagree a lot, we argue a lot, we, we fight with each other a lot, we all respect each other. You know, it's, at the end of the day, that's part, I think that's a credential for the job, is you need to be able to have an argument and complete disagreement with somebody else sitting up here and still respect them and still work with them in the future. But we constantly disagree, and people in the community are gonna disagree about what the plan is. Like I said, I get frustrated by the plan, I feel like it's not concrete enough, it's not clear enough, it's not deliverable enough. You know, when I wanna make a plan, I wanna say, this is what I'm gonna do in six months, this is what I'm gonna do in a year, this is what I'm gonna do in three years, this is what I'm gonna do in ten years. And, and, and that's part of the process, we're still working on, that's why we haven't adopted it, you know, we're, we're in the process of doing that plan. Be involved, be involved in that plan, but it's, you know, there, there is a lot of disagreement because everybody here wants what's best for the city, but we don't always agree on what that is.
I think to get people more involved, uh, it's obvious you guys won't touch the Craig Martin issue, but nobody is aware of these things until after the fact. There's a million different ways to get the community more involved prior, and, you know, you guys, Facebook, I mean, all this crap blew up because of Facebook, to be honest, everybody hears about it and it's, it's on there. If you've got big hot topic issues that are coming up, just put something on Facebook, if you're spending my money, I wanna know how or why, I'll be there, I mean, that's still the reason I'm here tonight, I got a better shift to do, but, uh, everything is hidden behind the lawyer after the fact, and, uh, that's, that's really aggravating. And one question I have that nobody has yet answered yet tonight, I'd love to hear from each one of you guys. I've already said that the reason Martin was dismissed was a difference in vision of Sweet Home. What is each one of yours' vision for the city? And it may not all be the same, but I think it's a perfectly fair question. What direction do you want the city go, and every person in this room wants to hear an answer to that, that question? And it shouldn't be able to be answered without hiding behind the law dog over there, uh, it's a fair question. And maybe he isn't that guy, what do you guys differ from him so much that you guys are afraid of lawsuits? Or, I mean, there's, there's something there, I think it's a fair question.
I believe we can do part of that, we can easily go around and each of us say what our vision is or current.
Their direction, not the differences.
Unfortunately, the difference part.
Right.
We, we, that puts us in.
What's your vision, forget his, what's yours? No, where do you guys wanna go? Which maybe is the answer, but nobody knows.
And I think, I think that's, I think that's, uh, a fair question, and I think we can, we can do that.
Can you answer it without a political answer? Where do you want Sweet Home to go? I mean.
I can't, I don't know, so.
I, I think it would be fair to go one by one.
Well, and I, and I don't know whether that would be all the way fair to our new counselor, but, uh.
But he answered the question when he was running before.
Yeah. What is your vision of Sweet Home?
All right. Okay, my vision has still been the same as it was when I ran before, and that is, I think we need to capitalize on our recreational potential that we have here. We have a lot of retired people in our community, and I still say now, as I said back then, when I went around and talked to almost everybody I possibly could, is that we need to find a way to coexist, because it's like my dad says, just cause I'm retired doesn't mean I don't like to play. So, I feel we need to capitalize on our recreational potential, find a way to coexist, and by doing that, hopefully be to bring tourism or other business to our town for this, but I feel we need to capitalize on what we have, cause we have a huge recreational background here outdoors and stop letting the county capitalize on things that we could be doing.
Excellent.
That's part of it.
Well, over the last twenty-four years, I've seen a lot of change, we went from being highly industrial area to being more, uh, of a, um, service-oriented type, uh, area. I think there's a way for us to go forward and to stay involved with the tour Oregon, with the cycle Oregon's, with all those things that are out there that we have, uh, that we've been involved in, I think we need to stay involved with the, uh, the, you know, the forest service programs that we've been involved with, I think all those are, are really good, I think those are great programs, and I think that, that we can, we can, uh, bring, uh, more folks into Sweet Home through doing that. I, I still believe as a, uh, as a group, we're talking, as the mayors of the different communities, uh, Sweet Home, Lebanon, Brownsville, Albany, uh, we're still sitting down and talking about how we can bring in businesses to the area. Not just to Sweet Home, but to the area. I think that we can look at, if Lebanon can bring in a business and we can help them, uh, we're gonna get our percentage of the jobs here. If Albany's gonna bring one in and they have a chance to get it there, then we can work with them as a group and help them bring it into Albany because we'll get our percentage there. I work in a pulp mill out of Sweet Home, I work in a pulp mill in Paulsy, I live in Sweet Home, there's a, that's what, what happens. I think the vision for Sweet Home also is, I'd like to see, uh, us work more on, on how we can keep the, uh, our streets safer and our, uh, and our kids more active in, in sports. As a lot of you know, I've, I've been, I've done that for years with my kids, I've taken them all over the world, and I think that it helps our kids to learn, uh, to be leaders and to be, uh, that person that will be gone to in the future for, uh, for help, and that we'll put in the time and the effort to, to do the things that are needed in our community. I'm not looking at it one day today or tomorrow, I'm, I'm looking at twenty years or thirty years down the road. If we're not training our leaders today and we're not looking at our things today, then we're certainly not looking at our issues for tomorrow.
I'm gonna agree with you on that.
Sorry, excuse me, you don't have the floor.
I'd like to respond to that when I get a chance, and I'm totally agreeing with you.
Okay, but you don't have the floor at this point, because we're, we're going through the council members, and after we're done, you guys can have your chance to respond, but that's my vision, I have a lot more. If you had another twenty minutes, I could talk to you about what I'd like to do. If you had another twenty minutes, I could talk to you about what I'd like to do, but, um, I'm one person, so maybe...
Well, I, uh, first of all, I ran for council hoping that the things that I would like to see could be accomplished. That's a long process. Uh, I think, uh, in many council meetings, I was told that we had resigned ourselves to be in a recreational community and I reject that. Uh, I think that we have failed miserably to bring new business into this community. And I was very encouraged when Mr. Cummings came and who owns the property down to the eastern park mill, told us that they were interested in bringing something in here for the community. That has not happened at this point. Uh, it has a lot of property, uh, and I think we missed the boat there. And another thing that's a passion for me is our public parks. And it's always been about money. Always, always, always been about money. And I think you're gonna find that this coming next year or so, you're gonna see a huge difference in Sankey Park and some of the other parks that we're doing. Uh, but my biggest vision, if you wanna call it a vision, is to, to, to get more businesses that employ more than three people. Okay?
If you can tell the difference between a first grade book and a sixth grade book, great. Otherwise, we just need support.
Can people show up intermittently to help?
Yes, as, as you can because...
Ten thirty in the morning, it starts.
We'll be providing refreshments, we'll be providing dinner and pizza for those who are still there. Depends on long. Forty thousand books is a lot of books to sort, but they're all going to our communities and the children. We figure we can send five home to each kid.
Thank you. And that's positive.
That's very positive.
Very positive. I wouldn't believe that could last, okay? Thank you. Um, so going on, we're, Julie. We have our, our If I Were Mayor finalists here. And, uh, we have one. Looks like our posters are unanimous. And, uh...
Thank you for coming.
And we actually have four different... Okay. So here is our, oh, the same one here, so we're still unanimous. This can be the same. Okay, so here's our winner on our... Here and here. And Julie's gonna send those off to the If I Were Mayor contest. What this is, every year we do a contest, uh, asking the kids in the schools what they would do if they were mayor of the community. To get input from them. We have them write essays and make posters. And some of them last year did, uh, videos. And so, uh, next, uh, next time we'll actually have the names of the individuals that won locally. And we're submitting the local winners into the state to see if they can win a state, uh, on this. And they get some pretty good prizes if they win at the state level. Thank you. That is done. Uh, item C, request for council action, city manager pro temp selection.
Uh, you're wrong. I put in RCA on that just to tell you what was happening. Um, and, um, I've been told by Julie that the best time for the seventeenth, uh, May 17th, uh, would be five o'clock, there's other meetings. So unless there's a big objection to that, we'll do it at five. Um, it's a special meeting, so you'll make...
May 17th, are you available?
Election night for the primary.
That is. Look who you get to make it.
Yeah, do it at five, I haven't invented...
At five, will you be able to make it at five?
Uh, I believe by about six or six thirty.
But I think it should be, should be able to have that be there by then. Five okay, you're five okay? Uh, five okay with you, James? Okay. So, and Greg or Ryan, one of the two of them won't be able to be here, I'm sure.
I, I have a question here that does not appear in this. And that was, we discussed the possibility of staff filling this position and...
I think that would be the...
We can, you can certainly discuss it. Nothing's off the table, it's just that I've gotten, uh, we wanna move on on it and that, uh, I've gotten, uh, at least three, right now anyway, um, people to say that they'll either be here in person or phone or Skype or whatever so we can look at their resumes, interview them, whatever. I wanna make a clarification, the bottom background check aren't done now for state law until the interview or asked.
And what is the thirty day period of...
I'm blanking.
Oh, do we have to have a thirty day period or not? We just, uh... I guess what I'm questioning is if we were going to appoint, if we're gonna have cities, you know, our current staff do this, it would be, uh, unnecessary to have all these people come and interview. So do we need to make that decision tonight? Or are we trying to schedule a bunch of other people come in to interview on the seventeenth? I think, I think we... I, I'm not keen on paying some, some other person if staff can fill the position. I guess that's why, I'll just, that's why I'm bringing this up. I, I'd rather rather have the staff we have do it now and if we have to pay extra for that or fill some spots, I would rather do that than break. You know, I mean, we're trying to hire a city manager and before we do that, we're going through an entire hiring process for a city manager temporarily. It's a very frustrating process for me. So before we, before we go on to that, then let's move down to the next request for council action to appoint the city clerk pro temp, which needs to happen tonight.
Correct. Uh, that's just basically by our charter, uh, when you don't have a, uh, city manager in place or a city manager pro temp, um, we've come up with, uh, it's mentioned in there, the clerk of the city, uh, city council. And so the resolution basically sets it out. You might wanna jump to that also so that put Pat and, uh, your finance director in that position. Uh, the, uh, as the warehouse says, the, uh, in the resolution, the, uh, a city employee can reserve two, two positions. The council points him to that. And, um, that's what's called for in there. Um, uh, and basically we're, on this situation, uh, we're just trying to follow, you know, what the, the, set out in the charter to do. And so that's where we're taking our guidance from that and, and basically, uh, getting a clerk in there, clerk of the council in there in that position. And then, uh, going on with the, uh, pro temp. All options are open, it's just that, uh, like, uh, the people, uh, you said, we're trying to just move the process on and how we do it uh, next, next time, I mean, on the...
So the...
Seventeenth.
The charter is clear that we need to have a, uh, person appointed as a clerk of the council, pro temp until, uh, time that we do hire a city managing pro temp.
Correct.
And so this is, this is where we're going with this. The, uh, uh, the person that is being recommended, uh, to appoint is Patricia Gray, finance director for the city of Sweet Home. Do we have a motion? I think it's a resolution, so do we need to... Well, we have to have a motion to move it forward. Because it's a... Move it to the second. Okay. Motion in the second, then we'll move that forward under resolutions. All right. Um...
You might wanna do that right now before we move on.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do, is go down to, under resolutions now. And have you read that, please? Robert?
What?
Would you read that, my title?
Yes. Resolution number four for two thousand sixteen, a resolution to appoint a clerk of the city council pro temp.
Okay, we have a motion in the second already on the floor by resolution. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion passes with five ayes, one excuse, and I'm not sure about Ryan.
Here. Here. Um, Pat, as an officer, I just need to have Pat read this into the, uh, the oath, oath of office in the record.
Out loud?
Yes.
Okay, oath of office, I am Patricia Gray, clerk of the council pro temp for the city of Sweet Home. Hereby take and host that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States and the state and that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office.
That shall be the chart.
Okay, I'm in charge.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, moving back to where we were, um, under request for council action, um, under city manager pro temp selection. I'm not opposed. I guess the question is because I am the in the state, does the staff, do they have the capacity to do, uh, take care of the huge person? For four months.
You're looking at, you're looking at at least six from everybody that...
At least six months.
And you guys can be born, I can come close to support position.
Or like, or is there somebody else inside the office at this time that you say, you know, since they're not here, I would more than happy to volunteer this person.
Well, I, I think that, I think that overall, I think that there's people on, on staff that are cap, more than capable of, uh, talking to you about, about the position and what is you want for that time period.
So...
Want you one of them?
I could be one of them. So do we want those staff at this meeting also? Well, the, the question then is, do we want to have a meeting on the seventeenth? Instead of inviting the, uh, everybody there to vet our employees and to talk about them, or talk to the employees and see if there are interested people within the city that would, uh, wanna do that first? And see if they're, if they wanna be on that, on that shortlist also? Or if we wanna make them the whole list? Do you understand what I'm saying? So do we want to do that on the seventeenth? And have that, that, the meeting on the seventeenth? Before we go, uh, and asking other people to come here, do we wanna do that thing? It seems like it slows the process even more. I was hoping we were gonna do that tonight and that's what we discussed the last meeting is that hopefully we can talk to staff and see if there's anyone interested to have to talk to tonight, but it doesn't seem like that happened. Well, I've talked to, I have talked to staff. And I think, and I think, um, Pat has said, um, in every meeting that I've ever been had with her or this, that, um, she's not interested in being the city manager. She's interested in helping and doing whatever she needs to do to make it work and not being the city manager. So, Mr. Spatter, do we have to have a pro temp? Or is there some legal requirement?
It just, or basically says, it, it, basically it says in the charter, it has, it says, you shall get a city attorney, city manager pro temp, and then you will give a city manager. I mean, it sets it out in there. So, yeah, it says...
There's no line here that when that has to happen.
Well, you can't have a city manager pro temp in the charter more than six months.
Well, no, but I mean, you can't, it doesn't say you have to have a city manager pro temp within two weeks, three weeks, or a month.
It doesn't.
So...
It just says a reasonable time. And you can't appoint a manager within four weeks of the time you had your statement of intent.
So...
Basically what it said.
Uh, if the direction of the council is to move forward with, um, a clerk and have Mike and Pat work together to try and fulfill that position until we know what we want out of that, or whether we wanna go that direction or not? Because I, I personally feel that there's a lot of, of, um, things that need to be done that we need that extra person, or we need an, an extra person, so... Yeah, I, 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 well, I guess what I was thinking is, could we bump Mike Adams up as pro temp? And what for, to, to the extent that we need a person in that spot temporarily, rather than going through this entire hiring process, if he works additional hours, you know, do overtime or whatever we need to do to make sure that that's fair. But, you know, I just, I, I, I just get so frustrated when we go through the entire hiring process as a precursor to an entire hiring process. I mean, we, we, we let's focus on a new city manager and try and do that as reasonably quickly as we can do it correctly. And, you know, let's have our staff fill the spot. I think that can be one person, you know, you know, whoever wears the magic hat, but it's not a very grand position. I believe he's willing to do it. Here's some of the, the issues that we need to talk about with this. Number one is that president pro temp, or the, uh, the city manager pro temp, one of the things that I would like that city manager pro temp to do is to be out getting new city managers. And that's part of what they would have to do through the arenas that, that has to happen. There's three or four major ones and then, uh, and recruiting. So, um, if Mike feels comfortable in doing that, I think that's something we need to ask him if he's willing to start, uh, doing that investigation and going down that path. Uh, the other thing is, is, uh, is preparing, um, some of the things that have to be done immediately, uh, as far as our city manager wise, that needed, that needs to happen. It's gonna be a lot of extra time, so we need to make sure that Mike's gonna be able to do that for us. So those are the two questions that I have, is would he be able to help with the process and search for a new city manager? Because that, that's something that has to happen and, and time limits. And, and just a question, I have to clarify that. Um, and I was under the impression, but I mean, the information might be clear, that we were gonna involve potentially an outside organization that's gonna be professionally helping us to retain and use it. We, we... That's the other, the other thing, but there's still a lot of, uh, things that have to happen through that process. Um, somebody's gonna have to do. And the communication with, with them and our, our needs and all that stuff, it's all... Yeah, so... Is that something you think you could handle as far as the, the communication and...
I can handle a lot, a lot of, a lot of things. What I would, what I would request is to have, uh, a further conversation with you to find out exactly what would be expected, uh, along these lines, as well as putting together a plan of attack of, uh, it, it's gonna be more than just added hours to me because there's gonna be duties that I won't be able to accomplish in, in exchange for this, which again, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to talk with you all about it, but, um, you know, if, if that's the desire of, of the group to, to do that, but...
That's, that's my desire, but what you guys think?
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with Mike, that's not, it's not an issue, but if there's other people that are interested, I think that we should research that too. And I don't know how to do that exactly, but, uh, I mean, if, I don't know if there's any, I don't know if people that would be interested, I don't know.
I was looking at city organizations.
Chief Lynn told me absolutely not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at city organizations, so looking at the tier, it's basically police services. Finance won't do it. Chief Lynn's not gonna wanna do it, I don't believe. No. Public Works. Community Development has just left us and Libraries, so unless it grows, yeah. So that pretty much is Public Works as our person available.
Maybe we could, if we could, if we could find anybody else who's interested and then we can go through the process that Mike has, because I, that concerns our too. You're busy, a pretty busy guy and so, anyway, I'm not saying it's busy, but if, I think by that next meeting maybe we should have a list, if there is a list. If there's not, then we will be one person to be handling with the head.
Well, and I think we need to come up with, um, our process. Um, because the process that we have as far as, um, who's gonna do the actual vetting? You know, and we haven't went through that yet. Or is the council gonna do the vetting? Is an outside organization gonna do that down to a certain point? Then after they get it down to four or five, then we do it? Um, you know, how's that gonna happen? So that discussion... You're talking about the city manager proper? Yeah, that's a whole different discussion. Yeah, but the city manager pro temp or Mike would be involved in that.
I think the council's going to want to be very closely involved in, in that process, but that's just my personal opinion, I feel like it's an extremely important decision for the future of the city, and, you know, you can see the interest the public has in this role, I mean, it's...
I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, it's, it's all a discussion that has to happen. I'm not going to make it.
Yeah. All right, so now we've spent too much time, and still have to...
So, for, I, so, the seventeenth, just the staff and what other issues we bring up, we don't want to, we, you don't want the people, you don't want, I have three people that could, you could talk to.
I think we have to lay out what our pri, what our parameters are for, for Mike, if that's what we're going to have.
Can I, can I throw up? He says it just came. How about if this next week, we can, can we already schedule another meeting the next night or the day after, attend it, because if we don't need it, we can always can it, we've done that with other meetings. Interview these people, at the same time, we can begin discussions with Mike of what needs to happen, whether that needs to be the, the full body, or just a couple of counselors, I'm not sure which. If we, before that date comes along, we decide, uh, we, we don't need to interview these people, we can can that, we can, or we can keep that, we can interview, keep Mike in the back pocket, if we get one of these guys who are like, that is totally the guy we want, we are pro temp, we can still go with that process, and we can say, congratulations, Mike, you're the last minute. Thanks for having me. That sounds, that sounds like a fine proposal.
Can you just outline the, the timeframe a little bit?
So, the following...
Seventeenth, eighteenth?
Yeah, the following night or two nights after, whatever, if anybody's, you know, that way we can make, we can interview and then make our decisions. So, originally, we're talking about having these guys, I'm sorry, the interviewing's...
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth. Next Tuesday, and then next Wednesday, we can have our final, long way to end, whether we're going, because between then and now, we'll have to sit down with Mike and say, this is what we need to have happen. And during that time, he may say, uh, nope, not it.
That's not, that's not what I want to do.
No. And then we can, or we can go through with those, and then on the eighteenth, make our decision one direction.
Sounds great.
Well, and I think, uh, one other small decision we have to make is we want full time or part time, um, pro temp.
Well, it was, uh, I was, I was, I've always assumed it was part time.
And, and I, I am too, but I mean, we, we need to make sure whether...
Let's decide that one, I think we've got the decision right now.
We're making the decision right now. Are we going to have part time? Uh, and I'm flexible on that, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, whether it's somebody in our day, whatever, we decide.
Right, we can talk with, come back, some of them may not want a thing, and that'll put them in or out, some people may be able to fit that schedule.
Okay. So, um, the direction then would be to do, look at part time, uh, president, or president pro temp, and we'll, we'll schedule them on the, uh, seventeenth or...
At five.
At five for interviews, and then we will, between now and then, um, I'll talk with Mike, do we have anybody else that wants to be with me?
Why don't you do it with Pat and Dr. Just, you know, work out any details, can you, the three of you get together on it, and see what we can...
Come up with what we think is needed as far as time wise and that, for Mike to do that job, see if he is even interested in that, and, well, we, we talked about it a little bit, but, because I didn't know exactly what we expected as a council of him, so...
We might also throw up and give, if we have other city employees, if they're willing or able, to tell them to get their hat in the ring, right now, because we can talk to them to, except, the same issues he's going to have is what these other folks are going to have, and if you need to sit down and talk to them at the same time, let's make it happen.
All right. So, you, can you communicate that, Pat, for employees, if we're going to do that this week? Until, before Friday, we'll begin with that.
Does anyone want to do it on the eighteenth?
Yes, please.
Send the eight to... Um, let's do it at, uh, we had to do the one at five because of scheduling things, but I think it's easier if we do it at six for, for Ryan and, and Greg. And, yeah, six o'clock is easier time. Okay. Request for council action, uh, planning director pro temp solicitation. Do we have a discussion on that, do we want to move forward with that? What do we want to do?
Basically, the recommendation is, uh, as you know, the city planner has left her a different job, and, uh, it's recommended that the city council make a motion authorizing city staff to execute a professional service contract with a planning director pro temp to provide land use planning services as needed on an hourly basis. Um, there, basically, for this position, there are some state laws and whatever, some timelines that need to be met, and somebody needs to be in there and meeting them, uh, there, uh, and so that's why it's here, also for the fact is that, uh, this would be the council's approval to the clerk of the, uh, clerk of the council to hire a planning, uh, director, or if you appoint a city manager pro temp, for them to hire the, uh, city, or the planning director pro temp, according to charter, because we need council approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing city staff to execute a professional services contract with a planning director pro temp to provide land use planning services as needed based on hourly rate.
Okay. So, we'll move that, um, is that a...
Legislation of motion.
Under legislation or motion? Okay. All right. So, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Moving forward, we have one more, under request for council action, request supporting assisted housing programs. Pat?
This is our grant, we got a twenty thirteen, a four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state that is, uh, creating homes around the Sweet Home Lebanon area. They're asking that we do depositional housing, fair housing activities, one of them is we're giving them a three hundred dollar donation towards the, um, the housing, the fair housing place, and then they'll be getting that, and then also they ask that we adopt the resolution saying that we support the housing, uh, fair housing within the city of, of Sweet Home, and that we, as we, that the, we encourage governance as a housing source, affordable, safe, and sanitary housing opportunities for people, versus a lower and middle up fixed income, so that's there, the people's are creating.
Did you say the extra three hundred dollar donation?
No, a three hundred dollar donation. Oh, our grant?
Yeah, I even thought, I heard, I'm sorry, I didn't...
The grant was a four thou, four hundred thousand dollar grant that was a pass, really passed, and it's going out and facilitating homes, in equal count.
Did you say something?
Three hundred?
Three hundred dollars?
Three hundred dollars.
The three hundred dollar donation would be made for the fair housing, um, there was, there was that presentation called... And then that shows we're making additional, supporting the foundation of fair housing act. And then the, uh, the publishers in the newspaper show that we're doing outreach programs for fair housing, and there are the people that come around and talk to posters on the board, and talk to people about housing opportunities, and finding about section eight and things like that, and making sure the homes are available that you're living in, and with the instructions, and things like that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, I'd make a motion to move resolution number five to legislation.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in the se, second, that's moved to, uh, resolution number five for two thousand sixteen, um, because we passed by resolution number four, and we'll move on to resolution number five. We have a motion in the second on resolution number five for two thousand sixteen. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, like those opposed. Motion passes with five ayes, and one, and one. Council reports, any reports from councils at this time? Many reports, I have been in finance, no report, park board, Ryan's gone, property? Uh, public safety?
Uh, no, no report.
Public Works? Yeah?
No.
Uh, private safety?
We have a meeting next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
After the other meeting. It's a horse dinner.
Yeah, whatever.
Tree commission?
No report.
Youth advisory? Um, at this time, uh, I'd like to appoint another person to the youth advisory council. Would you be interested in serving on that committee?
Sure.
Okay. So, we'll assign you that committee at this time. And, uh, this next one is next, would have been next Tuesday? Yeah. No, it was actually scheduled for next Tuesday, and, uh, so, we're in communication with them right now to see if we can postpone that to another date, because there's already two meetings on that night. So, we'll let you know when that is. Chamber?
I have a report, I need to go from them really quick, because this lady is normally here to, uh, oh, I actually don't have a Friday announcement from her, so I have no report.
Okay. Uh, fire district?
No report.
Council of governments?
No report.
Area commission on transportation?
I don't think at this time.
Uh, solid waste?
I don't think at this time.
Ad hoc committee on community and healthcare, this is the open meeting for healthcare with Samaritan and others. We have another meeting coming up on June thirteenth, is that correct, Pat? Our calendar is not here, so I believe it's June thirteenth.
We do have a meeting with Samaritan Health on June thirteenth.
In the council chamber, so do you want to show up? It's time to do it. We're, uh, we're talking about a community health fair. So, um, under mayor's report, um, at this time, I've been out of town for a week and a half, I have business in Texas, so, um, I do not have a report. Pat, anything in your, uh, clerk's report?
Surprise? No.
There is a list of, uh, things that was left for staff to serve on, different committees and different ones that, that we had Craig serving on, and so that's, we're in the process of looking at who we can have serve in those positions to, um, make that happen. Department directors' report. Finance director slash clerk.
Budget meeting, Carl, I think. Don't forget that, the general fund, discussing and, and what's, nothing left of the general obligation on the general fund. And don't forget to pay the property taxes prior to Friday. You sort of, or you sort of pay.
Okay. Library services director?
We're gearing up for summer reading, our theme this year is, um, on your mark, get set, read, and we'll have signups beginning June thirteenth.
Okay. No, what are any services, please, chief?
Nothing at this time, unless council has questions.
Public Works?
Uh, nothing at this time.
City turn?
No, we've said our meeting.
Okay. If nothing else, we will adjourn at nine fifty.